The time is now six o'clock PM. I would like to call to order the February 4th, 2025 Board Audit Committee Meeting. To order. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. My name is Dr. Tiffany Anderful and I'm the Chair of this committee and the District One Board Member. Let's welcome our committee members and the Board of Education Representatives this evening. Board Member Pamela Boozer-Struther. We have our, who is our Committee Vice Chair and our District Three Representative. Thanks for joining this evening. We also have Brandon Jackson, our District Six and Board of Education Chairman. Thank you both for joining this evening. Our other Board Representatives are unable to join this evening. Also, I'd like to welcome members of the Administration and our special guests this evening. If you all would oblige me, we'll have some introductions, starting in this order. Board Members, Administrative Staff, Board Office Staff, and all other guests.
Hi, good evening. I'm Pamela Boozer-Struther, the Vice Chair of the Committee and the District Three Board of Education Member, and I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening.
Hello, I'm Brandon Jackson, Board of Education, District Six. Thank you for coming to this meeting today.
Thank you. And Administrative Staff.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Lopez and I am Administrative Secretary for the Board of Education.
Let me point off the staff. No. And other guests. Let's see. Ms. Bowman, do you mind starting?
Yes. Hi, Trinell Bowman, Associate Superintendent for Special Education in Prince George's County Public Schools.
Hi, I am Judith White, Chief Academic Officer for Prince George's County Public Schools.
Thank you. If you are off of mute right now, can you please ensure that you mute your microphone? Our other special guests. Mr. Morrison, Dr. Morrison?
Well, I'm going to defer to my boss to go first because he controls my performance evaluations, so Dr. Hickman.
Just going to say that as well, so thank you. Hello, everyone. Dr. Antoine Hickman, I am the Assistant State Superintendent for the Division of Early Intervention and Special Education Services. And thank you for this opportunity. And with me, I have Dr. Brian Morrison. I'm Branch Chief for Policy and Accountability. And I also have with me Allison Barmett, Branch Chiefs for Family Support and Dispute Resolution. I've introduced you, but let them hear your voices.
Brian, you can go.
All right. I am Brian Morrison. As Dr. Hickman said, I am the Branch Chief for Policy and Accountability. I oversee two sections within the Division of Early Intervention and Special Education, although we might be changing that name. So the first section is Research and Data. So we're responsible for all the data collection, analysis, reporting, and dissemination to both state government as well as federal government. And then the Monitoring and Accountability Section, that's responsible for all the comprehensive monitoring, which we'll talk about today, as well as any targeted monitoring that comes up through the course of, through the course of potentially credible allegations, so.
And I'm Allison Barmett. I'm the Branch Chief for Family Support and Dispute Resolution. We handle all the state complaints as well as proactive family phone calls and support the family support teams that are in each LEA. And we liaison with the Office of Administrative Hearings.
Thank you. I think we have another guest. Do you mind introducing yourself?
Good evening, everyone. I am Janice Walters Semple and I'm the Acting Internal Audit Director.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for those introductions. We will go ahead and proceed. Ms. Lopez, could you please call the role?
Dr. Anderful?
Present.
Ms. Boozer-Struther?
Present.
Mrs. Brown? Mr. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Django? There are three members present.
Thank you. The quorum is present. We'll proceed with the meeting. The primary purpose of Prince George's County Board of Education Audit Committee is to provide oversight of the financial reporting process, the audit process, the Prince George's County Public School System of Internal Controls and Compliance with Laws and Regulations. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the February 4th, 2025 Board Audit Committee Meeting Agenda. There being no objections, the meeting agenda is adopted. Ms. Lopez, please take a roll. Take the roll call vote, please.
Chair, you already approved the agenda.
No one objects. Apologies. Okay. Give me one moment. Okay. Then I believe we proceed with the meeting. So there are zero registered public committee, I'm sorry, public comment speakers this evening as well.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, you need to go over 1.5 approval of the minutes.
Oh, dear. Apologies. Okay. If there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the January 13th, 2025 meeting minutes as distributed. There being no corrections, the meeting minutes are approved. I'm going to ask this time then. Ms. Lopez, is a roll call needed?
No, Chair.
Okay. Confirming. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to item 2.1. Public Comment. So there are zero registered public comment speakers this evening. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is our discussion for this evening. So I'd like to recognize Dr. Judith White, the Chief Academic Officer for the Monitoring and Compliance of Special Education Presentation.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. This evening, we'd like to just share our process and procedures for monitoring compliance. And when we have concerns around special ed, how we're audited, we'd like to give you a lens into the work that we do and how that work takes place. Tonight with us, we have our partners from MSDE because we thought it relevant to bring MSDE as they work with us each year in areas of compliance. So I will turn it over to Trinell Bowman, who will work with MSDE. And they have a presentation that will go through, and then we will take questions at the end after they share.
Would you like for me to share the presentation? Are you okay?
Trinell?
Yeah, please. You muted it was Bowman.
Go ahead, Ms. Lopez. I'll have you share your screen. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you to look at our systems and structures around how we monitor special education. On our next slide, we'd like to thank our Board Members that are represented at this meeting this evening for your leadership to help support what we do in Prince George's County. We also would like to recognize Millard House II, our Superintendent, for his leadership and guidance that he extends to us on a daily basis. Our outcomes is really to talk about the systems and structures that we have in place to support students and how we look and engage our special education process. We wanted to first start with the role of schools and offices in the special education process, just to kind of calibrate and level set, what is the role of our schools, area offices, Department of Special Education, and the Department of Student Services. So we know first, our schools are obligated to determine or locate and identify students that may be suspected of having a disability. We also know that our schools are responsible for developing, implementing, and progress monitoring our IEPs. And then we also know that our schools are responsible for ensuring that our students have FATE, which is a free and appropriate education, in their least restrictive environment. When we think about our area offices, those are administrative offices that supervise and support our schools. So in Prince George's County, we do have three area offices, Area One, Area Two, and Area Three. Each of those offices are led by an Associate Superintendent. And within the area office, each of those Associate Superintendents have instructional directors that report to them. And the instructional directors are those that supervise our principals at our schools throughout the district. The responsibility of our instructional directors is to really ensure that our schools have systems and structures in place to really monitor the implementation of learning that is happening for all students in their schools. Our instructional directors, through our Board of Education Theory of Action, are really charged with building leadership capacity and again, making sure we have systems and structures to support learning for all students. The Department of Special Education, our responsibility really lies in ensuring that we have systems and structures and professional learning opportunities that support the implementation of specially-designed instruction and related services for all of our students across our continuum. We are a birth-to-21-year-old state, so we provide services to students in the neonatal unit at hospitals at times, at birth, all the way through age 21. We also are responsible, responsible for ensuring that the COMAR, our state regulations and federal regulations are followed and that those requirements are met by our school teams. We also are charged with providing resources to families as it relates to children and students with disabilities. On the Department of Student Services side, we wanted to highlight this area, this office as well because they support a variety of functions in our district such as home and hospital, homeschooling, the Mackenzie Vento Homeless Program, Pupils Personnel Services, School Health. The other important distinction is that they do oversee our Section 504 Services and professional school counselors. And our district professional school counselors do serve as the 504 Coordinator at each of our schools. And so we wanted to make sure that we lifted that up for you this evening. And now we're going to dig a little deeper into our special education monitoring systems and structures. We first start on the next slide with the Maryland State Department of Education. And I'm so happy that our colleagues have joined us to really talk about what they do to monitor us from that programmatic lens. And so in just a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hickman and his team to kind of talk about their approach to monitoring local districts, including Prince George's County. And then once they conclude and review those slides with you, I'll then come back and share with you how we look at our general supervision from a programmatic lens as well as a fiscal lens. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Hickman, who's going to walk us, him and his team, through the next several slides.
Thank you. So as for the next few slides, what you're going to hear from, some here from Dr. Morrison and Ms. Barmett, who are going to review their state monitoring process. There are several components to the process. One is special education policy review. The second would be like case studies, in which we do observations and interviews and walk through the schools and have opportunities to meet with the teams to just take a deeper dive into not only what we see on paper, what the data says, looking at IEPs, but also getting an idea of how the really, the practical parts of what is done works. We also look at some of our reports that we have to, to share, our state performance plan and annual performance report. And then we'll really share what happens after the monitoring takes place. And then there's be a conversation about that piece about compliance and how the two, not only the monitoring of these go hand in hand, but some of the outcomes that go with the monitoring and how we follow up on that. And so with that, I'll give you Dr. Morrison, who will walk us through the process and the monitoring components.
Yep. And I would say I'm good with stopping at any time if you have questions or you want me to clarify something. You know, feel free. So the federal government IDA requires us, as part of our general supervision process, to conduct comprehensive monitoring. They require us to do it at least once every six years. In Maryland, of course, we do a little, we do things a little bit better and more robust than, than what's minimally required by the United States Department of Education. So, so in Maryland, the, the least frequently we monitor LEAs is once every four years. LEAs can be monitored annually, every other year, every three years, or every four years, depending on their, their tier of general supervision that we put them in based on their local determinations, which I'll talk to you a little bit about later. I also want to say that we have been nationally recognized as having a robust comprehensive monitoring process. Dr. Hickman, myself, and Dr. Ashley Flynn presented to, to a national conference last summer as, because we, because we were so recognized as the most in-depth comprehensive monitoring process. So all that being said, now that I've tooted our horn, the, the first thing I wanted to mention is that we do a policies and procedures review. So we require that all LEAs have policies and procedures that are consistent with both IDA and COMAR regulations. And we review those policies and procedures, provide feedback when those policies and procedures might not be in align, alignment to COMAR IDA. And these are just the areas, I'm not going to read them, but these are the areas in which we review as part of our policies and procedures document. There's also, and I don't know, I assume that Trinell, we're talking specifically about part, part B in this special education versus early intervention. Okay. Just know that we also oversee birth-through-21 monitoring. And so Prince George's County Public Schools is the lead agency for the Infant and Toddlers Program. And we, we have the policies and procedures monitoring document for early intervention as well. Next slide, please. So here are additional pieces of our monitoring process. We do IEP reviews. The number of IEP reviews depend on the size of the LEA. So for, for Prince George's County, being the largest, one of the largest five LEAs, we do, we do the most, which ends up being about 80 IEP reviews. If, as mentioned, if any LEA is under 75% compliance with any of the indicators that we're looking at, they must do an improvement plan to focus on ensuring compliance with that particular indicator. And I'll, on the next slide, I'll show you just examples of the indicators we're looking at in the IEP review document. We also review a sample of, of the students that are placed in the alternate framework to determine whether or not the Appendix A was utilized and whether or not it was utilized appropriately to place a student in the alternate framework. We do a physical restraint and seclusion review. And while Prince George's County Public Schools can't do seclusion themselves, if they place a student in a non-public school, non-public schools are not exempt from seclusion. So if a student record that we randomly pull is in a non-public school, we will look at whether or not the seclusion was done with compliance. But we do look at whether or not the physical restraints were compliant in terms of COMAR. We do related services reviews. So we look at 25 random records and look at what services students are supposed to have been provided over a three-month period and make sure that those services were provided or there's a student-related reason that they weren't. Next slide, please. This is just a screenshot of the, the monitoring rubric. There are a total of 89 special education markers that we are looking for based on IDA and COMAR. So you can see in this particular example, just a few of the things we'd be looking at for, as we're doing a review of an IEP. So when I mentioned we do 80 IEPs, we're looking at up to 89 potential areas of the IEP to ensure compliance. Next slide. One of the things that's really unique to Maryland is the case studies because we're not just concerned about compliance, we're concerned about results and student improvement and narrowing the gap. So we do, we do, do a handful of case studies in each LEA, looking at IEP progress over the past three years to determine whether or not, if a particular student was not making gains, if the IEP team then went back and looked at the, at the services and at the goals to revise those services and the goals. We don't want to see IEPs remain the same if a student is not making adequate progress, is not narrowing the gap. So we're looking at that as part of the case study. We're doing classroom observations as part of the case study, looking at the specialized instruction, looking at the, the, the specific services that the student is getting in the classroom or out of the classroom for related services in some cases. We interview administrators, service providers, the general educators, if the student is in the least restrictive environment. We interview IEP chairpersons, we interview the parents, we interview the student, if the student, if that's applicable and the student, applicable and the student is old enough. And one of the things we're looking at is whether or not, you know, the, the documents that MSDE creates and provides to help families, to help service providers, to help administrators, makes it down to, there's the, the level of, of intended staff. So, you know, we, we ask parents, are they familiar with resource documents? We ask IEP chairs if they've seen the technical assistance bulletin that MSDE put out six months ago as part of, as part of that process. Next slide. So Dr. Hickman mentioned the state performance plan and annual performance report. So outside of the comprehensive monitoring process, the federal government has, has, has identified 18 compliance and results indicators that they, that MSDE must report on annually. So we just submitted it, it was due February 1st. We send statewide data of those 18 compliance and results indicators to the federal government. Sometime this spring, we will then create report cards for each LEA and assign them a determination category as well as a tier of general supervision. So the best you can be in is, and this is written in IDA, the federal government gives us a determination. And then we give LEAs a determination, and those determinations are meeting the requirements of IDA, needing assistance to meet the requirements of IDA, needing intervention to meet the requirements of IDA, or needing substantial, substantial intervention to meet the requirements of IDA. So, so not only do we monitor individual records when we're doing comprehensive monitoring annually, we look at all of Prince George's County data, assign improvement plans when, when there is non-compliance and, or improvement plans when results targets are not met as a way to also monitor Prince George's County Public Schools services and data. Trinell has, I'm sorry, real quick back there, because I know Trinell has linked in the previous monitoring reports. So you can click on those monitoring reports. When non-compliance is identified, OSEP, the Office of Special Education Programs at the United States Department of Education, requires a two-pronged approach for correcting non-compliance. The first prong is correcting individual student data. So if you identify that a student has not received an annual IEP, say, the first step in correcting non-compliance is making sure that student gets their annual IEP. The second step is that we have to run a sample of subsequent data to ensure 100% compliance with that data. So we, we then, once Prince George's County says, hey, listen, we, we have, the student now has, has their annual IEP, we will run a subset of data to determine whether we're seeing 100% compliance in, in ensuring annual IEPs in that subsequent population. So only then do we consider correction of non-compliance to occur. LEAs have a year from notification to correct non-compliance for both prongs. Once, if, if we get to a point where it's been a year and both prongs aren't corrected, that's when MSD will assign a corrective action plan. So I believe that's it for me. I think the only other thing we wanted to talk about real quick is targeted monitoring, which there isn't a slide for. But, but Allison receives thousands of complaints, hundreds of complaints per year. If, if there is a credible allegation identified in either a complaint or in a group of complaints, we can do a targeted monitoring. And we're required to do a targeted monitoring by OSEP's QA 2301. It's, you know, it says if, if the state receives a credible allegation of potential non-compliance, the state must investigate. So just recently, we sent out a memo that we have to do a targeted monitoring on whether or not orientation and mobility assessments are being done for students who are blind or low visually impaired. And that came about through complaints and credible, credible allegations that we're saying, that we're seeing that students weren't in fact receiving orientation and mobility and not, not specifying Prince George's County, but across the state. So we're going to do a random sample of those, of those blind and visually impaired students to make sure that, that we're identifying non-compliance if it's there.
So what Brian's referring to is my office does individual, his office does the, the, you know, the large picture, my office does individual complaints. And when he was talking about credible allegations, if we see a pattern throughout the state or in a county of, or in a county at certain schools, we, when we see patterns, we pick them up and we work very closely with Brian's office. And if we see something that seems to be a pattern across the state, we will ask Brian's folks to do a targeted monitoring. Or we say we have a credible allegation, we will ask them to pick up on that.
So any questions about that process? All right. Turn it back over to Trinell.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. So now I'm just going to give you Prince George's County's approach and how we monitor. You're going to hear very similar monitoring systems that the state, we feel like is very, we, we have always felt over the years that the way that the state monitors us, the rubric that they use is the same way we should monitor ourselves. So the same indicators that Dr. Morrison mentioned, we do those same reviews. So we have the alternate instructional framework, he talked about that. We also do some additional monitoring pieces that the state may not necessarily look at. So one example would be the emotional disability identification. We are a district that has over-identified students, African-American students with an emotional disability. And so we have a targeted plan through our comprehensive coordinated early intervention services that requires us to tackle that problem, to do a needs assessment, a root cause analysis. And so what we did as a district is we developed an eligibility tool and we trained IEP teams to use that when they suspected. And we trained IEP teams to use that when they suspected a student, one, is suspected of having an emotional disability, or two, they are doing a reavow and the suspected disability is an emotional disability. We have been definitely able to reduce by at least twenty percent of those students that were identified historically with an emotional disability, that tool is definitely helping us to reduce our disproportionality. So that's an area that we target our monitoring on. We also look at our functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans to make sure that those procedures are followed with best practices. Do we see an area of need in the IEP that really talks about interfering behaviors? If we do, has a team call for a functional behavior assessment to determine if a behavior intervention plan is required. On the next slide, we also do our indicator, that's you heard Dr. Morrison talk about the SPP report card or the indicator data. Two of those indicators that are included in that report card is indicator eleven and indicator thirteen. Indicator eleven is looking at our timeline. When a student has a suspected disability, are we meeting the timeline to comply? With that target, the state target is a hundred percent, meaning that if we convene a meeting, we move forward with testing that we're bringing those results back within that expected timeframe. In Maryland, we also have secondary transition plans that are required at the age of fourteen. At the federal level, an IDA is required at sixteen. But again, Maryland is a very progressive state as it relates to special education, and so we do those transition plans in Maryland beginning at fourteen that really looks at what's going to happen when a student exits our school district. So all of our students with IEPs must have a secondary transition plan that has a variety of components. Agency linkages we have to look at, do we do a career interest inventory, do we have goals associated with their pathway that they want to embark on when they leave us? We also look at least restrictive environment monitoring to make sure that if an IP is saying that a student needs this particular LRE environment, when we go out and observe, are we seeing that and then are there any errors? So as students transition from one program to the next, or from a specialized program to general ed, are we correcting those errors within the LRE monitoring? So we do have work groups that look at that and make sure that the students IEP addresses the actual environment where they're receiving the services. On the next slide, we also look at physical restraint. Again, we use the Maryland State Department of Education rubric. We use the same rubric that they use to monitor us, and we use that same rubric to monitor ourselves. So we not only look at our students in public schools, we're only able to do physical restraint. But we also look at our non-public schools, they are required to submit those restraint forms through our non-public office, and then we have a monitoring process that we actually review each of those restraints that have come in or seclusions and restraints from our non-public. So we do a hundred percent of review and making sure that we're following all those specific indicators that have to be followed. For us in Prince George's, we do a four percent related service log review of all of our discipline areas listed here to ensure that students are receiving those services. If we find that services have not been entered in a service log, we are having those follow-up with our providers. If we see that they're missed services, we are making up those services. The additional monitoring we do is around text of speech accommodation. In the accommodations manual from the Maryland State Department of Education, they have developed kind of criteria and guidelines that IEP teams must follow in order to provide that accommodation. That's appendix D, as in David. And so within that appendix D, again, we're making sure that those guidelines have been followed. And if they're not, we're giving that result, those results back to the school team. Of course, when we're any monitoring that we're doing, the district is not overturning any type of IEP team decision, but we're giving that data back to the team and asking them to reconvene to re-review, because perhaps it may be that they're not not meeting the target as defined in the accommodation manual as an example. On the next slide, we also do an IEP review. You heard Dr. Morrison, because we are a large district, they talked about eighty-five, approximately eighty-five IEPs are reviewed. We do for the district-wide, we do two per school. So right now we have two hundred and two schools, which means we would review four hundred and four IEPs. But then we also review two IEPs per non-public school where our students are receiving their education. And we have a plan, if we go to the next slide, it talks about what happens once those results are indicated. We go a little bit higher than the state, the state, when they look at the indicator, has it at seventy-five percent? So again, if you're not meeting the target, at seventy-five percent, we do an improvement plan. The way that we do our support plans at the district level is we look for patterns and trends of improvement, and we do an overall number of eighty percent. So all of those eighty-six indicators Dr. Morrison talked about, we also monitor against those, and when we see schools are not meeting an overall rate of eighty percent, we are doing support plans for those schools, we do a report. We've been able to build a report through our business intelligence system that allows us to generate reports to our schools to give principals the results. We also may have to convene IEP meetings if there are corrections that need to be made at the next annual review. We also do professional learning and coaching. So last year, when we did our monitoring, we had about thirty-seven schools in our district not meeting that eighty percent threshold. We then did follow-up meetings with those principals and their teams, and then developed a support plan around the targeted trend data that we saw based on those monitoring results. At times, central office teams will reach out to schools and ask them to, for example, we noticed when we did the monitoring, you were missing the IEP signing sheet, or you were missing, you know, appendix A for students who are on the alt framework, and ask them to 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 upload that information. Also, when we monitor the same way as the state, if we see that services were not provided, we may have to have IEP impact meetings, or we may have to make up the services, depending on what we see in our monitoring results. And the last thing that I would share, like MSD, if there is a pattern or concern that comes out of a school, you know, we do do our due diligence to investigate those concerns. And sometimes it may just be one case, and upon that investigation, we may have to do what we call a similarly situated review, where we're looking at all students in that particular grade level who may have missed services or not received their intervention as an example, and then we do do that review ourselves and do our due diligence to investigate those concerns and then follow up as appropriate with families if we have to convene IEP meetings. The third area that we look at is our special education accountability checklist. So we have developed accountability checklist, our special and instructional specialists, we have one assigned to each of our schools across the district. And they are, their responsibility is to meet with principals or their designated to go through that checklist, to go through special ed data points, to look at specific student cases. We do utilize a rolling agenda that allows us to document any follow-up actions, who's responsible, what is the timeline for meeting those expectations? And then each month on the checklist, our principal or their designated is required to sign off on the checklist. And if we go to the next slide, we did hyperlink our January checklist, just to give you a flavor for what's actually in the checklist. It does change by the month. Some things repeat from month to month. So if you look at our September checklist through our June checklist, some of those same things will repeat. But then we also have specific targets, if it's related to progress reports going home to parents, have those put home. Are the is the intervention data being utilized? Have you looked at your usage data? Have you looked specifically at students in our CRI and regional program? Have they completed their unique learning benchmarks? So we do, again, based on the month. We do differentiate the checklist, and I think for January, I believe we had around thirty-two indicators, it was a two-page document. We have the person responsible, was it completed, yes or no, or is it non-applicable? If something wasn't completed that should have been completed, that's where we're going back into that rolling agenda, and we're having a follow-up conversation with the principal or their designated around that non-compliance, and then we're troubleshooting that again at times even with our area office to engage the instructional director in those conversations. On the next slide, the one thing that we definitely are very proud of in our district, and we couldn't say this even four years ago, is that we have really worked very hard with our information technology team and our special ed team to really have data at our fingertips through business intelligence reports that allow us to really drill down at any moment in time, if a request comes in for data, or I'm at a meeting and I need to really drill down to individual schools that are in compliance or non-compliance, I'm able to do that. On the next slide, it just gives you a variety or flavor of our dashboards that we have, our reports that we're able to generate. And so I'll give you an example, that's one of our last reports that we've been able to develop, which was really looking at our progress reports across the district, and are we in compliance? Not just are they done, but are we indicating the criteria? Do we have a actual detail about the progress report based on the criteria that we know that a progress report is completed? And then we're able to push that information out each quarter with some subsequent follow-up reporting to our principals and to our area office leaders to show are the progress reports being completed? And that was based on trend data and things that we noticed in our monitoring, as well as state complaints that came in where progress reports weren't being completed. We continue to build each year on our business intelligence reports to really be able to give us actionable data so that we can then drive the progress of meeting our particular compliance results and performance indicators. And then on the next slide, you have a business intelligence report handout, this just gives you a snapshot of some of the BI data dashboards and reports that we're able to generate. Again, looking at students who are potentially, I can tell you how many students are going to exit with a certificate or diploma or projected to, but that really allows us to really be able to problem solve. One of the other pieces, we know that every student must be reviewed for extended school year. So we now have a report that allows us to look at how many decisions have been made, how many decisions are deferred, because we know we have to make those decisions forty-five days before the end of school, right, to allow a parent an opportunity to appeal if they didn't agree with the decision. And so we're able then to drill down to individual schools and look at where they are with completing those determinations. So it's definitely been a game changer for us and our district. The other area we look at as another way to monitor trends on the next slide is our dispute resolution committee. And this is really a committee that's a problem-solving committee. It's really a mechanism to look. Each week, we talk about state complaints that have come in, we talk about letter of findings, where we've had findings, we look at any type of mediation or due process that has been filed in the district office of civil rights complaints, any complaints or concerns that come to my attention, to my, to Dr. White, our chief academic officer, to the superintendent's office, we really pack that. It's also an opportunity to problem solve and really think out of the box for students that may be struggling or we're having difficulties. We have representatives from the Department of Special Ed, myself and my team that's there, Department of Student Services, Office of General Counsel, and then throughout the year or throughout the weeks, we may actually invite principals in to problem solve cases, the area office, Department of Transportation, Health Services, or other offices as needed to really look at patterns and trends. The other important piece of this committee is we're able to look systemically at areas of non-compliance that could result in maybe as there's a misinterpretation of an administrative procedure. We look at that, that we may also have to make updates and make that recommendation to my chief of administrative procedures that may need to be updated, just as a result of one student case that comes through this committee. So it's a great committee that really allows us to look systemically at our concerns or issues across the district. And then on the next slide, we've just provided you with just some trend data of from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four with the number of schools that were reviewed and the number of cases coming from those specific schools that were reviewed throughout the years. On the next slide, we just wanted to just let you know around our fiscal monitoring. We have a business operations coordinator and a financial team. Each month, we have monthly Medicaid meetings. We also have a financial monitoring meeting with our grants office, our budget office, and our Medicaid office to really look at our expenditures, how we're spending down. Are there any concerns around needing additional financial support that we then have to escalate through our financial review process? We also, within those meeting structures, also look at our restricted funding, general funding as reports are due to MSD, we're having those conversations. We look at our maintenance of effort and other comprehensive financial reporting or auditing that may come through. The other thing that we do is our staffing, so we meet on a monthly basis with our Department of Human Resources and staffing to look at vacancies, trend data, any type of concerns that may come up around staffing. Look at recruitment, look at retention, different things of that nature that we also review around kind of that special at fiscal monitoring. The other thing I wanted to just reiterate is that we do have a two-point-oh specialist strategic plan. I know we have talked about it just with the entire board of ed that we released that in twenty-twenty-four. On the next slide, it just kind of gives you just some points around the strategic plan that it's really about stakeholder input that we receive to really do the two-point-oh. We had a one-point-oh version that was from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-three, and this is our second version of the strategic plan. On the next slide, what I did pull out for you is just some specific action steps from the strategic plan that really address monitoring and compliance. So you see that we're building a training plan to really go deeper as new business intelligence reports come out that we can train our administrators in the area office. We're continuing with our IEP audits. We also are going to be developing a special educator administrator guide to really assist principals and assist some principals and coordinators around those systems and structures, really looking at, you know, how do you plan for this particular process in special ed? How do you implement it? And then how do you monitor and evaluate for improvement? You also notice that we're going to be communicating findings and developing support plans when we see patterns of non-compliant and working really closely with our area office. So talk about that strategy, what does that look like? How often are we going to be providing that communication to our area office? So that, these are just some intentional action steps that really relate to our monitoring compliance. So I wanted to lift those out for you. And then that concludes our presentation. So at this time, we'll stand by and take questions.
Thank you all so much for that presentation. Thank you, Dr. White. Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Thank you, everyone who joined us from MSD, Dr. Hickman, Dr. Morrison, Ms. Farmat. Thank you so much for joining us. I'll now open the floor for discussion. I'll recognize Board Member Pamela Boozer-Struthers.
Hi, thank you all so much. And again, I want to apologize for being off camera because I'm not feeling well this evening. One, I want to thank you for how in-depth this presentation is. It is incredible amount of information. So I'll I'll attempt to get some good questions out here that I've been thinking about the you know, when we think, first, I want to say thank you to every PG CPS staff member in the special education division to you, Ms. Bowman, Dr. White. For, I know it's it's hard work. And also to every educator. And it's my, you know, as I've, as a parent now through K through ninth grade, I certainly recognize that every teacher is a special education teacher. So the training component was at the top of my list, like where where we are with building that confidence and effectiveness. And I think that's absolutely the the first step. And I think we've collectively stakeholders have come together and recognized that. So I want to thank you. But my, you know, as we think think about our audit hats, we think about the financial implications of of this chronic underfunding and the stress on the system. And and I, you know, I'm pleased that we have MSD here because I think we're in this together, that the stress, that underfunding stress is felt by the state state department as well. I just wanted to see if we could hear some you know, reflections on, you know, where we go from here around this funding issue, because we know that the governor has stated that he's going to reduce the tuition, you know, have families pay more in non-public placement tuition and some other just like the the absolutely wrong place to cut in my mind is the just like the, the absolutely wrong place to cut in my mind is the stress on the families. So creating more stress. So there can be some reflections on, on your, your realities around this funding issue. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
My response to that is that um as the schools are suffering and as you, you've already stated, it is, it is a state issue and then go even nationally. IDA hasn't been funded as promised since it was um um agreed upon in, in nineteen seventy-five. So for the past fifty years, special education as a whole has been underfunded. Um, there have been small incremental steps to address it. Um, but yet it is still in a position where we um have to utilize braid funds to serve our students. And then the needs of the student population has in, has increased, it steadily increases. Even sometime when the numbers go down, the services that the students need um are increased. And then on top of that, there's a, there's a shortage overall of teachers. And when I say teachers, I'm talking about everyone who's providing a service. So that's, that's a teacher-related service provider, it's like social workers, um, speech OTPT, um, and even when you get into behavior and behavioral um ECBA's and the like. And so it is difficult and it continues to be difficult to meet the needs of our students. But yet we still try to do all that we can. We try to look at um the staffing plans. We look at IEPs, we look at systems of monitoring. Um, in your district, you do a significant amount of contracting out to provide those services. We um, we collectively, and that's, you know, it happens in, in Prince George's County, but it's something that's going on across the state. And being a larger district, then you really feel the pinch. Um, and so the answer is we got to continue to fight and we, we, we do that. We work with our superintendent, super, superintendent Wright. Um, is definitely now, um although she's not, let's say, um, get the language correct. She's not hired by the governor. Um, you know, she's, she reports to the board, but she's now a part of the, of the governor's cabin. And so that is a plus um for the agency. It's a plus for education. Um, and the governor speaks to that. Of course, he doesn't want to cut funds to students with disabilities. Um, no one does. And, well, I can't say no one. I'm sorry. I don't know what the next, where we're living in this time that we're in right now. We want to know that there's a huge population of people who, who want to see um our students with disabilities receive what they need. So um I'm not sure if that's the answer you're looking for. I'm giving you the answer that we have. And um we'll continue to fight for, for, for that.
Thank you. No, I just think it's so important to give the context of this chronic underfunding and the, and what we know from the Thornton and Carwin commissions around special education equity in, in ca- in every county and specifically what we learned about Prince George's County to give that context anytime we talk about some of the areas in our system that have the stress. So um I really appreciate that and I will, I will wait for a second round.
Okay. Well, if I may, I have a question before we proceed to second round. Um, thank you for that response, Dr. Hickman. Um, so I had the opportunity to um look at the report that was provided, and let me get the correct title. Um, the actual monitoring report that was provided um for our infant and toddlers program. Am I correct in that? That's the correct. Yes, okay. Um, and so I think in looking at this, um, I'm also asking this question, obviously, for those who um may be seeing a monitoring report for their, for the first time. Um, in looking at this, what I'm trying to assess is um how do I make sense of what's shared here um around what has actually been audited, what the specific outcomes were? Um, is there someone who can speak to, speak to that portion of this report? Um, and then also give us a sense of um when we were last um audited for our um K two, um twenty-one um programming, and then when our next one will be completed?
So there's two, I was going to say, I, we did upload two reports. One was for Part C, which is the infants and toddlers birth to age three. Um, that was uploaded and the last time we were, um, the last time the report was released was twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, we're getting ready to start um a Part C monitoring this year. And then for Part B, which is ages three through twenty-one, our monitoring report would have been from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we can unpack um that report with you. Um, if there's a specific page number, MSDE is here and definitely can go over that specific. If there's a particular page or a question you have, we can pull that out. And Dr. Hickman, were you gonna say anything? I'm sorry. And then I think the other question was, when is the next monitoring going to take place for Part C and Part B? So I'll let MSDE answer that.
So then I'll, I'll, I'll speak to the, the schedule. The um, as Trinell mentioned, the, the schedule for Part B is, is monitoring this in this current year. We, I can't tell you what the future monitoring will be until I do determinations for this year because that monitoring cycle might change based on what determination Prince George's County Public School receives. Um, if they receive meets requirements, then they wouldn't need to be monitored for, for four years from the previous monitoring. So that would be twenty-six or, yeah, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school year for Part C and twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year for, for Part B.
Dr. Morrison, can you indicate, you said when we receive our, so you all are looking now, when we receive that data?
So, so yes, when we uh just submitted the, the statewide data to the federal government um on February first, uh, now we'll begin the process of integrating local level data into our Maryland Elevate system in order to do determinations. Before July, uh, July has always been the latest. It's been, uh, I'm going to say I'm shooting for uh late April, early May. Um, just because at some point, these data are two years old. Because for the, the determination that we're looking at, the statewide data and local data we're looking at, it's from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, so for that particular school year, for the twenty-four school year, we report on, on February first, twenty twenty-five. Um, and um, and so when we get closer to July one, twenty twenty-five, those July one, twenty twenty-three data are two years old. So um we try to get it out sooner rather than later, but it's a function of when we have to report to the federal government as well as data collection, analysis, and all those, those fun things. Um, but so uh before July, but I'm shooting for, for late April.
Thank you. I can hold my, um, the second part of that um until round two. Um, but thank you so much.
But you, I'm sorry, you asked a, a question about the Part C. Uh, sorry, I, I keep using Part C and Part B. I apologize. Part C is uh of IDA is early intervention. Part B is the special education portion of IDA. And you might know that, so forgive me if you already knew that. Um, but we sometimes get bogged down in special ed talk without realizing that you guys probably don't do this every day.
We appreciate that, especially for those who also may be watching um or may watch this after. Thank you. Great. Okay, I'll go ahead and proceed then to round two and recognize you, Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Right. Thank you so much. So I want to, you know, speak to the, you know, the, the family experience. And I think that, you know, base, you know, we, we had, we've been having town halls um in addition to CCAC, which has really, you know, allowed us as all stakeholders to come together and address the pain points. And I, I think when we see data and all these processes, you know, for a family that is not getting what they need, this, this, this piece of our work is not, is not going to be at the top of their, their list. So um, I, you know, as a board member, I'm seen as a advocate for, for families. I'm asked sometimes to bring forward, um, you know, a- ask for helps to navigate the system. And for my vantage point, my goal is to, you know, bring solution, right? What can I do as a board member to make sure the right people are connected to solve the, the problem for the family? Um, but not everyone knows how to contact their, their board member. So I was wondering if you could talk a, a little bit about um how, how all of these um ways for compliance? Um, you know, if you could talk a little bit more from the family experience. I know that you have a family guide out now, and I think it would be good for us to spend a minute getting, you know, close to, close to, to the um, you know, what it feels like to be, you know, a parent um trying to navigate and not understanding um how to get, get the needs met.
So the first thing, I'll let, and I'll let Trinell jump in. The first thing I would say is the last board meeting we had, we had an opportunity to really delve deep. I'm only putting that on this recording so that if a parent is watching, it will be great to go back and watch that recording because we talked through the IEP process as well as how to utilize our family support center. And when they have a concern and their concern is not met at the school, we also provide in that presentation the steps. So they should start at the school with the case manager. From there, they should go to the building administrator. From there, there's an instructional director who's the supervisor for the principal. Then you have the associate superintendent, and then there's a chief. Um, we know that in there, we also talked about disputes that would go through our compliance office and/or a parent has the right to appeal to MSDE. So I just, I just want parents to know that we do have that process to go back and watch that video if they, if they are interested. I am excited because that, I was going to call you Dr. Bowman, but I'll stay there. Trinell actually did a family support for the board and she did a family support document for our families. Um, we did also inquire with some parents to get feedback before we released that document. That document is now on our website. We tried to make it really user-friendly, just the how-tos of navigating. The other thing I will say, and MSDE is on here as our witness, is we have to have a family support center. Most have one position. We have one staff with four. And so worst-case scenario, and this is also in that presentation, and the board members have it in case a parent reaches out to you. If you are stuck, if you can't get anywhere, please contact our family support center and they will put you in contact with the right staff member who can assist. I would say well-stated, Dr. White. I would, there's nothing I would add to that except I will let the board know that we are, we have gotten wonderful feedback about the family toolkit. Um, from advocates to our families are finding it very user-friendly. And what I shared with, um, a group that I met with earlier today is that that's going to be a fluid document. Each year, we're going to update um and add more resources to it. But I would just say to you, both from our advocacy community and our parents, they're finding it to be very user-friendly, kind of a one-stop shop of everything they need to know about special education. So I just want to give a special shout out to our family support center and all the work that they did to prepare both that document and the Board of Education Specialty Resource Guide. Yeah, and then Trinell mentions the advocacy. I think it's important because we did not say that at the last meeting. Um, clearly, we're, we're not getting everything right. That's, we wouldn't have MSDE here. And I, every time someone says, well, MSD is partial to you, I say, well, I can't tell because every time I get my, my monitoring tools back, we're dinged. So I think MSDE does the right work to make sure that we're staying in compliance and they are a wonderful partner. But they challenge us in areas that we can be better and they, then they partner with us on how to assist us in getting there. But I didn't realize until Trinell and I are having these conversations that she actually meets with advocates. It is an ongoing meeting. And so who best to talk about the richness because our advocates are at the table. They're in some of these meetings. Um, and so we have CCAC, we have our partnership with MSDE, but we also have the advocacy um space where we're getting feedback from there as well.
Yeah, thank you so much for taking um some time to cover that because I, as a board member, um, really appreciated receiving the family support guide and, and understand that this is progress. But it takes all of us to help other families um to reach families like through, you know, the parent-teacher organization meetings and anywhere where, where families are. Because this is, it's just, it's just hard work to get, to reach everyone who, who needs this information. So thank you so much for spending some time on that.
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll continue then with my um, the, I guess, the second part of my question. So um, and, and somewhat in following in, in um Board Member Boozer Struthers um line of questioning here as it relates to families. Um, we of course have, you know, parents, families who, you know, question whether or not our um special education, you know, programming is compliant, right? If our, the way that we are navigating the administration, the monitoring of IEPs um are compliant. So I appreciate you providing um these two reports um, or our most recent reports. Uh, if, if there's someone on the line who can kind of just speak to, um, you know, I'm looking specifically at uh, blah, 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 the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four um performance monitoring report on, starting on page ten. Um, how would you explain um what the outcomes of this specific report um show? And, you know, what, when we look at this data, what exactly we're doing to, to address it? And that's part of my question is, you know, when you're talking about some of the strategies um on the last slide that you shared um that you are hoping to implement, um, are some of these things directly um being taken? Some of the areas where we are not compliant and is that what's informing the strategy, some of the strategy? So if you could speak to some of that here, because I'm sure, you know, we have parents who probably think, oh, we're just not compliant, right? They want to know, like, are we compliant? Like, how many, like, what are we doing? So if you could speak to that, I think that would be helpful um and get things down to um a level that makes it a bit more um.
I'll let Trinell and Trinell speak. What I will just add is that know that anytime we are monitored and audited by MSDE and there are findings, we are required to do an action plan back to MSDE. So I just want our families to know that. We don't just get a report and, you know, good for us, we got a report. For everything that there is a finding, we have to do a report back that we're monitored on. Are we doing what we said we would do to, to self-correct? So Trinell, I'll turn it over to you. So we look at page ten.
If, if I can, um, I'd like to also just um allow time for full response here. I know that's going to take a little bit longer than forty-five seconds to speak to this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So you heard Dr. Morrison talk about those um eighty-five indicators, eighty-six indicators that they look at. So if you look on page ten of the report, that starts with the item level compliance. And so when you look at, you know, the items that are associated on page ten, which is the section ten of the IEP process, and then it moves on to participate, participation in statewide assessments, development of the IEP, so on and so forth. If you look at that particular graphic at the TART or that table, it shows that for all of those items um indicated that Prince George's was at a ninety-one point four, four-nine percent compliance and eight point five one percent noncompliant. If we dig a little bit deeper, you'll be able to see if we look at item ten point one, that's looking at where appropriate IEP team members attending the meeting. So they look at our sign-in sheet. If a student is in general education, we're expected to have a general education um teacher at that particular meeting. So that was where we were eighty-seven point five percent or eighty-seven point fifty percent compliant. If you drill, if you drill a little bit deeper and we go into page eleven, you'll see that eleven point one C where it says results of assessment documented. So within the Maryland Online System, in the Maryland Online IEP, you have to document the results of assessments. That was something that we were marked for a systemic noncompliance because we were at thirty-three point three-three percent. So that is an area that we are addressing in our own monitoring as well as our follow-up uh with specific schools and as a systemic.
Uh, with specific schools and as a systemic, um, approach district wide. That's an area where we were not compliant. So if you look at that last column and it gives a percentage of compliance. Any area that's less than 75% requires us to submit an improvement plan to MSD. That plan outlines what are we going to do to address the area of non-compliance? And what are those follow up actions? MSD then monitors us against completing those specific actions to bring that particular item into compliance. That als- that's also where Dr. Morrison talked about the Prong One and Prong Two approach. Where they're also looking to see, have we improved, right? Because the ultimate goal is that we're over that 75% threshold. Um, if you go down further to the development of the IEP. You also see that annual reviews are completed within one year. That was at 95.89%. One of the pieces that we have around that to monitor is our business intelligence reports. That gives schools the reports every month of the IEPs that are coming due in 30 days, 60 days and 90 days. We also give a report of any, um, annual reviews that are over that one year mark that are considered expired. To give them that data. So that's an example of years ago, we weren't at 95%. And we built that business intelligence to be able to monitor against that. 12.2 is another area where we have a systemic non-compliance. Around looking at an IEP and the present levels of academic achievement and functional performance to make sure that all. The areas of need are documented. But then you can see on the next indicator, 12.3, we're at 87.50%. That really looks at how do we write statements in the IEP that really deals with the impact of a student's disability. And so I can go on and on, but that just kind of gives you, as we look at all of those different indicators. Again, we have to be at 75%. So if you look just overall.
How many total indicators were there?
There were eight six.
And how many?
We had six areas of non-compliant, systemic non-compliance.
How many again?
Six.
Six, okay.
That were identified. Um, and so that just kind of gives you a flavor of just the overall compliance of those specific indicators. Um, that we follow in terms of looking at, um, those compliance. And so we have submitted our improvement plans. That state did review those. A couple, they gave feedback on. We then met with MSD again. Updated those improvement plans, um, to they, to satisfactory with the state. And then now we're monitored against completing those improvement plans.
And then I would just add, I would just add that, and just because we're above 75%, we still have to do the work to monitor them. Right? Because we don't want to fall. Our goal is to fix what's not compliant and stay compliant in areas where we are compliant. Which is why we created the dashboard, which is why we send the emails to principals, which is why we do the monitoring. Uh, monthly monitoring sign offs, uh, because we want to, we want to get better and we want to maintain.
Was that helpful? Do you have any other?
Yes, that is helpful. Um, I technically have a part B, but I don't want to be non-compliant. So.
I'll move that, that we have a third round.
So moved. Okay. So then, um, I will, um, I hope for round three. Thank you so much for answering those.
Who needs to take the roll call?
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Hi.
Ms. Mrs. Strutter?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Hi.
There are three and affirming.
We will proceed with round three. Board member Boozer Strutter, I'd love to give you the opportunity since I just spoke, if you actually have a question.
Uh, no, I'll, I'll, I wanted to make sure you had the time.
Thank you so much. Okay. So, um, this, this won't take long, but to your point about the dashboard then. So I'm looking at the, um, examples of the BI Dashboard Reports compiled document that you provided. And in on page two. Um, it shows at the top, the total active students. Um, you know, those have met target, those that have not met the target. It's showing. A number, so 73.7%. LREA. So have, having met that target, but having not met the target for. Well, um, yes, if someone can just explain this to me, um, exactly what I'm looking at here. Cause I'm, I'm seeing desired target. There are obviously, we don't want to have any expired IEPs. This is showing 601. Can you just speak to, to this dashboard here and what it's showing?
Yes. So each month, um, our team pulls the data dashboard over and it's updated. So this was as of March 6, 2024 as a snapshot. So on any given day, um, each month, we have what we call our dashboard. It provides us with the total active number of students as of that day. Our Maryland Online System does sync with our student application system. So Synergy. Or previously it was SchoolMax. So it is able to give us that snapshot in time. So it is a snapshot. So as of March 6, 2024, it gave us the number of active students. It broke those active students down by preschool age students as well as school age students. If you also notice, we did trend data. So it showed us where we were in October of 2020 versus October 21. So that we can kind of see, um, that trend data. We also look at the least restrictive environment as it relates to LREA, LREB and LRC. So LREA talks, um, speaks to students who are educated in the general education environment. For at least 80% of their school day. That is a state target. So we've identified that we're in the green. We've met that target. The LREB is not monitored at the state level, but LRC is, which is students that are in a self-contained program. We should be at, um, at that time, the target was, uh, 10.76% or less. We are definitely over that particular threshold and part of that is because we have phased out our public separate day schools. And so we do have an increase of students that are in self-contained classrooms as a result of phasing out. And the closure of some of our, uh, public separate day, uh, self-contained schools. Um, the other thing you'll see, and this is again pulling from our data dashboard. The number of expired IEPs at that snap, snap, snapshot in time, we had 601. We, the desired target is zero. And then the total number of expired, um, IEPs. I talked about earlier that we also look at the extended school year eligibility determination as yes. Um, and have those decisions been made? We also look at our child fine count. Meaning the number of students that were identified, um, as a student with a disability. We look at our non-public students. How many are in those particular non-public programs? What is the percentage of those students in non-public schools based on our population? And then we also look at, again, their expired IEPs and their expired evals. So everywhere you see in red is either a state target that at that point we're not meeting. Or is a target that we have imposed on ourselves where we want to be. Um, in terms of being able to meet, um, those requirements. So that's just data that we have in behind this. We can drill down by schools. Um, we look at overdoses by schools, overdue valves by, um, clusters of schools. So we look at area one, area two, area three. We also, um, look at trend data. So I'm, what I'm looking for is when I look at March. And I have the top five schools that have expired IEPs. When I get to April, what I'm expecting to see is not those same schools, right? And if I'm seeing a pattern and trend of the same schools. Now I'm having conversations with my team around, have we engaged the principal? Have we put that on the principal's rolling agenda? Have we talked about it? Um, are we seeing movement? Is there a plan of action to bring those IEPs in compliance? We do know that we do have compliance issues around staffing. And so sometimes our central office team members have to then go into schools where we may not have a special educator. And actually work with those schools to convene IEP meetings of, um. Pieces that may be expired, um, with those particular schools. If we're continuing to see the same school show up at the top of the list, then it's engaging the area office. We have, we're seeing patterns of trends where there's not movement to bring the school into compliance. And then we're engaging in those conversations. For our expired, um, evaluations, we may have a situation. As we drill down to the data and realize that we may not have teachers trained to administer certain educational assessments. Um, we also know that we have some psychologists where we've had to leverage contracted services to help. And then we do have Presence Learning, um, is a vendor that we've been working with the last three years. To support schools that may have vacancies to be able to bring our reevals into compliance with the timeline. So that just kind of gives you a snapshot. But again, this is data that we look at every month. I review it with my team and have conversations. About the data that we're seeing.
And even though we review it monthly, um, Trinell has SEISs assigned from her office. They each have a caseload of schools that, this is good. You heard her talk about. They can see their school. So on a daily basis, if they need to go in, it's a quick snapshot that they can see as they're working with their schools. And those caseloads in our CSI schools are around one to eight. Outside of CSI schools, their caseloads are probably like one to 11.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize you, board member Booze Strutter.
All right. Thanks. Um, I'm gonna go to a topic that you all hear me bring up just about every year, which is. I think this is a climate and culture question and it's, um. You know, about my experience as a board member where I have, I experienced the opposite of disproportionality. I experience families who feel that they can't get started. With services that they, that they believe their child should be evaluated for. And I, I wanted to know, I don't know if you have here in the data, a point of how, how many. At the beginning of this process is parent requested versus. About, um, you know, that a teacher or other staff member. Asked for a meeting with the parent to begin that conversation. And, and I know that disproportionality is a, a big concern and it seems to keep showing up in the data. But I feel like I, I work more with families who, who worry about their children. But don't know how to get traction around, like, should they be assessed for ADHD or other, you know, otherwise? So that is, I know I bring this up every year, but I was wondering where, you know, where things stand on that in the data.
Yeah. So we, we can tell you just. From our child find data in terms of the grades in which students are being identified. So we do track. You know, if they were referred. Were they found eligible? And I can just tell you, if we look at our invincible data and our school age data. That probably 85%, I can get that exact number. So don't quote me, but it's definitely over an 80% threshold. That when students are referred for evaluation, they are found eligible. So we do track tha- that particular data in terms of our trend data. So I can definitely provide that. What we don't track is necessarily who made the request. Did it come from a staff member or did it come from a parent? Um, that's something that we can go back and look at with our teams, but that is not something we specifically track. We do track if they, if a referral came in, if we assessed or evaluated the student and were they found eligible. So I do have that trend data that I can share. But overwhelmingly in our district, if a student comes through the IEP team process. Over 80% of those students are definitely identified. Um, but that's trend data that I can definitely pull from our data team and, and share that if you would like to see that data.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it. I, I think more is this education of parent and climate piece of believing that you'll be believed. And I've heard this, this is when I put my parent hat on, right? You know, I've been, you know, through elementary, middle and high and, um. Definitely, um, in elementary, as an elementary school parent. There, there, that seemed to be a recurring worry that if you bring your concerns forward. You're not going to, you know, be able to access assessments, like that they're too expensive for the district. Um, or, or other, or otherwise. So I think that's, um. I think that's something that we should be talking about, like what the actual data is around that.
And that's why we say for parents to go back and watch that last presentation because we talk about the timeline. And if a parent brings forth that they need, they would like their child to be tested or to, um, be looked at further. It starts a timeline that we didn't have to comply with.
In our position, anytime I talk to principals or educators, we always want to err on the side of caution. So if a parent suspects, because sometimes they're saying things that we may not be saying in school. And so we always want to go through that evaluation process because it's better to rule it out, right? Than let it manifest a year from now or two years from now. And so we're very clear that if a parent brings that forth, we're convening that IEP team. We're having conversations because sometimes we may have enough information just from the parent. You know, maybe the parents already had a psychological done, or maybe they already done a report, right? The pediatrician has already recommended that the parent do certain things and they've done that. And sometimes depending on what they have, we may not even have to assess the student. Because we may have enough documentation that comes in, right? That we can then determine that the student is eligible. Um, but we always definitely, at any time we suspect a disability, we want to evaluate that student. Um, and see if there's additional assessments that we need to bring to bear to determine if that student is eligible. Cause every month or every year that we miss, right? With providing those specialized services, the gap narrows, um, or it widens for students if they're not getting the appropriate services.
Yeah. And, and thank you for, you know, stating that, re, you know, reaffirming the commitment and the rights, right? That from the, the day you bring a concern and say, I think we need to take a closer look at my child. That, that there is, that there's a compliance path that activates. And I think that's, again, we get back to the education. And I, again, I think it's a climate and culture piece because it's a, it's, um, parent to parent stories, right? So I think that's something that we need to be aware of, that, that we need to make sure that that narrative is, um. Through the resources that are now so well packaged together that we can diminish that narrative and get it into parent leaders' hands. And those who speak to a lot of parents.
Thank you. Thank you all so much, um. For taking the time to answer, um, questions and engage in this conversation tonight. Just want to pause and ensure that there are any additional questions. I don't have any, um, at the moment. So before we conclude round three.
I would just like to really thank Dr. Hickman and his team for just their, um, being gracious. Uh, when we called, they answered and chose to come and, and support just to bring clarity to questions that you have. It doesn't go unnoticed. Their support to our district in assisting us in moving the work. I'm very grateful.
So that we will all do reach out, hoping to reach out to us. It's, it's a two-way street. Um, but then there's also the contact that we have with the parents and families. Many times, you know, email, phone, they do reach directly to us and we do send them back to the proper channels. Or we help to respond and, you know, just, just to help to resolve his issues from where we can. So. Yep, we do have to, um, monitor you and we do have to ding you. And we, we also have to off, offer that support to you as well, along with other, um, issues across the state of Maryland. But thanks for the opportunity here. I've heard some great things that are going on that will also help us to respond. Because there are concerns or questions that come from the state board about what goes on or what's going on in PG. As you know, there are some parents who, who've, who've come to the, to the board and they represent, or they feel like they represent. The thousands of students that you have and you can't discount that. But, um, some see that if that's a sample of parents that are coming, then they see it as an issue. But we have to use the data, the data that you share. I think, um, made the point, you know, six out of your, six out of your 80, some indicators are, 80 things reviewed are, are, um, non-compliant. So, um, you are doing great work, um, but we can always improve. You've never said that you're perfect and you never said there are problems. And they come your way, um, you develop a plan and we just have to follow. So thank you.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you all so much. I'm, I'll, I'll echo that before we proceed. And again, thank you to everyone who took the time to come tonight. When we broached this topic, I knew that, you know, as Dr. White mentioned, this was a topic at one of our most recent. Board meetings and there was a rather extensive presentation that was put together and we did not have the opportunity. To get to this portion of the presentation that spoke. that spoke specifically to, um, how, um, you know, our programming is audited. And so saw this as an opportunity to bring this to, um, our committee, um, to allow our families, our parents, and otherwise to be able to just gain a little bit more of a deeper insight into, into how we are monitored. Um, and just to get a better understanding of, um, some of the information that has been provided. Um, so thank you all so much. Um, I echo again to our state, um, for coming to join us this evening. Um, we appreciate you taking the time, um, this evening and look forward to continued partnership. So, just to note, if there are any follow ups from tonight's meeting, they will be shared. Um, once we receive them. So for those who, um, mentioned that they would share additional information um, or any other items that we stated, they will be shared, um, upon receipt following tonight's meeting. If there is no further business, there being no further business, the time is now seven thirty-one PM. And the February fourth, twenty twenty-five Board Audit Committee meeting is adjourned.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.